Let's call the regular meeting to order at 6 o'clock. It's the Woodbury Select Board, Monday, April 14th, 2025. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
A little executive session later. And if you insist, I'll dig out my references.
You do have to do that.
1 VSA, paragraph 313, A1B.
And is that, can you give us just, what's that for? Like personnel? It is, okay.
Employees.
Can you give the code there for the VSA?
Michael.
I was writing.
I think it's 313.
No, 1 VSA, 313, paragraph 313, small a, 1, um, B, capital B. Labor Relations Agreements with Employees. It's not really a labor relationship, but you know, it's what we got. Oh, we could do other, other options under A2 would be the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Stick with the first one.
Yeah. If I don't, I'll let you correct it when I send it back.
Oh, I'll make sure.
So we've all had a chance to see the, what, any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. So we've all had a chance to see the minutes from May 24th in draft form. Is the, their motion to approve or reject or?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 24th, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Excellent.
I'll bring you a clean copy tomorrow night. Or maybe, I don't know. You can take this one if you want and I'll make sure you get a clean copy.
All right.
Without my initials on it. I forgot my folder. So I don't have your copy either.
Ah, that's okay.
I don't think we have any public joining us on Zoom. And Mr. Markson is here on the agenda. So seeing no public, we're going to move on to the Town Clerks' report.
I don't have any updates for appointments.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, but didn't, um, Paul Council, did he talk to you?
We did your last time?
We did George Sawyer last time.
Okay. Then yes, we will have Paul Council for the Conservation Commission.
Okay. I move that we appoint Paul Council to the Conservation Commission.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and Paul's appointed to the Conservation Commission. And so we're still missing a few of those, right?
Yeah, we're, we're doing pretty well. We just need a health officer, we need a.
We need a health officer.
A tree.
What?
We need a health officer badly.
Yeah.
We need a tree warden.
A tree warden, yeah, a tree warden.
I'll trade somebody, a tree warden for a health officer. Any takers?
Well, we haven't gotten our letter from the state yet appointing you, so you're safe for now.
Can't wait.
In the solid.
Solid waste district. Planning Commission, one or two, two people.
I'm not sure how many at this point.
Right. Abe Barnowski is probably moving out of town, so.
Would it be worthwhile to make a front porch forum post?
I've thought about that, yeah.
With like a less, I mean, I'm sure nobody in town knows.
Yeah.
And that could be something we work on at our next, next meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
All right. FPF, post for appointments. Great. And anything else to report from the Town Clerk?
We have only had 114 dogs licensed.
Still.
From last year, we are still missing 70.
Wow.
Of the ones that were licensed last year. So we will be sending out notices to the people that have not licensed yet.
Postcards, like you did last year.
So hopefully we'll get some of those 70 licensed.
Yeah.
And that's just about all I've got.
All right. Thanks, Robin. We can move on to Lily Baron's treasure report.
Okay. Um, so for income, over the past three weeks, we've had a total of $27,782.95. Majority of this was delinquent taxes at $13,026.85. Um, we had some prepaid tax come in at $3,000. During this time, we got the total of the library fundraising from Pie Breakfast, which did great at $4,722. And then the remaining was police permits, copies, recording fees, and a BLCT refund regarding the insurance for the fire department. We had an electronic transfer from the state of Vermont. Two, that equaled $11,014. And then we got Swenson's funding this past week as well. Expenses for the past three weeks have been fairly hefty. We had some pretty big deals come through. Payroll was $17,293.45. Account's payable at $40,515.81. And a transfer from our money market to checking $24,000. So that's the overview of what's kind of going on money-wise. As for my training, things have been progressing well. I've started taking my course, which has been surprisingly fun. And I've also been working and talking with Randy and John Reed about looking at our balance sheet more with a more critical eye. And so kind of building into that and seeing how things look throughout the year. Learning recommendations from them, things like that.
I know John mentioned that he might have some like, uh, in terms of creating a treasures report around that, making it more accessible to us?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. That would be something that you guys would dig into or one of the things that you're digging.
Yeah, yeah. He was in the office, I think it was last week, we kind of got talking on that subject. And he had mentioned some other things that other towns do, looking into what their treasures reports look like.
So you mean something a little more succinct than this, that she gives us, which is everything?
Or just, um, yeah, I guess maybe a little more user-friendly? As a snapshot?
Part of it too is like, kind of like a guideline of, you know, where our spending is in regards to each fund, you know, where we might be toeing the line for the year, whereas we may have a lot of funding in other areas. You know, just making sure that we're spending the way that we said that we were.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Lily. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. So we've been having this discussion about town official emails. And Mr. Markson, he graciously agreed to skip, graciously agreed to attend the, um, the meeting. And before we get started, I think we'll probably ask for some clarifications just on terms, which I think, which I think sometimes scares people. So it might, it might sound like we're being.
Thank you.
Ignorant or naive, but we're going to ask, I'm going to ask those dumb questions.
Do you want to ask your questions? You want me to walk through this and see what those terms come up and then ask your question?
How about I ask questions if it's addressed here? I think one, then we can skip it. But I think one thing that maybe has made some folks concerned is their ability to access the town email from their home computer or from whatever platform that they use.
You will be able to access your emails from home computer, your phone, from the web.
Yeah, great.
Or tablet.
Tablet. And any electronic device that supports access to the web.
And I think the other confusing part is that there is a concern that if we like, gave those email addresses names like Town Official 1, Town Official 2, that they could carry on, but that wouldn't, it wouldn't be personal enough for.
I got clarification.
Okay, great.
So my fear was if we named it Town Official 1, Town Official 2, Town Official 3, that we could easily carry those emails forward, okay? But if we called the email diana.paduzzi@woodburyvermont.org, then Diana eventually gets to leave the board, okay? That email account would still exist. Diana's emails would be archived, okay? And the new person coming on the board would get that email account with newperson.me@woodburyvermont.org. Does that make sense?
It does.
It does.
I do think that way people should know who they're emailing, so yeah. Having a name there would be good.
I agree with you, okay? My concern was is how did we transition that to the board? Because, let me, let me get into this and we'll talk more.
Yeah, great. You're thinking too far ahead.
What?
You're thinking too far ahead.
Yeah, I know, all the time. My wife generally puts her hand up and stops. So it's all about email options for the select board. It's free email. And when I say free email, what do I mean? Gmail, Yahoo, AOL, Hotmail, et cetera. Anything you don't pay a fee for. But what some of those I just listed, I know Gmail doesn't. But some of the others might be charging now, I'm not sure. Or you can have a paid, secure email license, paid, secure annual license subscription email. Specifically, we're talking about Microsoft 365 or M365 Managed via RB Technologies. Now, I originally told you it would be free, I lied, okay? I did not understand.
I don't think you lied, I think you were just wrong. I know that's probably worse, but.
You lied. Exactly. I admitted. And you can tell my wife I said I.
Oh, God, oh, no.
So if we look at a secure annual license subscription email, there are two license options, and they're on a per-user basis. There's a basic license that's $72 a year, or $6 per month, or $216 per year for three users. The next, and I'll explain which each one of these is. The next level up is business standard, which is $150 per year, $450 per year for three users. The business standard license is what Lily has, that's what Robin has, that's what the town clerk has, that's what the listeners have. I believe that's what you have. I don't know exactly what they wind up giving you for your email. But anyway, those, those are the two options. What are the difference between them? The basic, the cheaper the two says you can only access your email via web interface. There is no desktop icon that you click on for Outlook, okay? There are no desktop icons for Word or for Excel. Okay, so you must have an internet connection, it's got to be a reasonably good internet connection. When I say reasonably good, consolidated communications DSL is not going to cut it. You're either going to have Comcast or CD fiber with the minimum basic plan. Does that make sense? What I've said so far?
Doesn't, doesn't work for somebody who just has consolidated communication, but yeah.
Very easily get CD fiber.
Oh, real, no, not in Hardwick.
Oh, I'm, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, talking about Hardwick.
With the business standard, you get the desktop icons for Outlook, Word, Excel. And there's other stuff that comes along with this. And you flip to the second page, okay? You'll see what you get with each license. And down at the bottom, it shows you the icons that you get on the desktop for the business standard and the icons that you have on the web. Okay, that's, you can, you can look at that at your leisure. I just provided that for information purposes. The good thing about using M365 and tying into the town-based internet is you were just talking about seeing a balance sheet. Lily using what they call SharePoint, can stack that up in the town's account. Everyone can go look at it. Okay, you're looking at the same copy. You don't want to make notations on it because you don't think something's right. You make a notation, everybody sees that notation.
When you say the town's account, what do you mean by that?
That's woodburyvermont.org.
That's the website?
No.
No.
That's the email. Website is something else.
I'll get it one day. Just keep working.
The email, the website might be the same, I'm not sure. It might be www woodburyvermont.org, but email is something at woodburyvermont.org. And they're two different things.
That's confusing.
Yeah, well, I could, I'll come back at the next meeting and I'll give you an explanation of the difference between the two if you ever wanted. So the Microsoft 365 account is managed by RB Technologies. They have multiple hurdles in place to prevent the email from getting hacked. And towns are being targeted right and left because they're, they're open to the public and they pick up emails. And people tell me, well, I don't care if I get hacked because I have nothing important on my computer. You don't realize it, but you do have something important on your computer. So when somebody hacks your computer, what are they looking for? They are looking for your address book, they're looking for your personal information, they're looking for financial information. And if you're doing a good job of protecting that stuff, maybe they get away with your address book. And say your address book has 100 names in it. Mine's got over 1,000, okay? So they hack your address book now, now they send out these scanned emails to everybody else. So it's like, you know, you, you've got the measles and you're not vaccinated, and now you've spread the measles and I hope there's an antivaxxer, I mean, I apologize, I just, you are. But you spread it to everybody else.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
So in the last, I don't know, few months, I've gotten emails from all of you with all of your names on them.
Oh.
Fishing.
Yeah.
And it was, it was actually our emails.
I think one of them was actual your emails, but multiple registry names.
Is it like asking for gift cards?
No. Most of the time, there's something more innocuous, like just asking if, you know, I was going to be there on such and such. But when you look at it, there's like, it's an answer, it's kind of like a horoscope. You could answer, you could ask that and apply to anybody, but. But the point is, they get a hold of one thing and that gets information to fish somebody else because it looks more legit than something without that information. So, you know, when I get an email, fortunately, frankly, the address that I'm using is so completely compromised, I get, there's so much garbage that comes in over the email. I don't trust any email that I get on that email address. It's just, I actually consider.
This is the email that you would send to use?
No, the EMD one.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Really? That's a new one, relatively new.
It's a, it's a cesspool. I don't trust anything that I get over that without examining the email address. Because I don't know what happened, but it's been like that since I've had it. There's like, apparently whoever had it signed up to various lists I got.
All right, let's, let's shut that down and do your new one.
But my point is, I get stuff with your guys' name on it. It's not your, most of the stuff I get, but I've examined, it doesn't have your addresses, but got your name on it. And because it's just, it's just fishing. And then, you know, like, law the way these folks operate, if you respond, then, then they engage. So let's have bots run the thing and then they'll pick up when people actually engage. But any, that's, that's to the point, that's why.
Why this is important.
Why it's important. Even if you don't suffer from something, if you get information, it can lead to someone else getting fished.
Does everyone know what a bot is?
A robot.
It's a robot that sends out emails, okay? Just because I got an email from Diane asking for gift cards or an Amazon card or whatever, that doesn't mean that Diana's email account got hacked. Her free email address is somewhere else and they got hacked, that's where that could have originated from.
So they can spoof the from. It's like you can get phone calls that are coming from numbers that aren't actually coming from them because they can spoof the number that it's coming from. Same sort of thing.
Can I go back to just one?
Sure.
For, in terms of access and the strong internet connection, we would need to simply access.
No.
Okay, sorry.
A good internet connection.
A good internet, okay.
Like the basic that CD fiber offers, 100 megabytes. I think the basic that Comcast offers is 15 megabytes. Both of those would be good.
And that, we would need that simply to just access the email?
To be able to upload and download email and if you're going to do town documents in Word or Excel, okay, you're going to be uploading and downloading. You want something reasonably fast.
Okay.
So could you do it like off the internet? Like if I was somewhere without Wi-Fi, but I had internet?
If you had the less expensive, I was going to say cheap, less used or less expensive version. No, you could not.
Okay.
Okay? If you worked somewhere else off the grid and you wanted to do town work, you'd have to have a device that had the business standard license, the more expensive of the two. That would give you the capability to have that stuff on your device, work on it. Then when you get back to civilization, you could upload it.
So you can get, you can be off, off grid and not have any Wi-Fi and still get emails?
So process the email.
Oh, okay.
The fundamental difference you're talking about is web-based versus client-based.
Exactly.
So basically, web-based is the file lives on a server somewhere. You get on the web, you go use your web browser to access the file, you don't get around with it. The other version is client-based, which lives on the client, or you can have the option of having a copy on your client, AKA like your desktop at home. And so you could have a version of Word or any of the Microsoft suite on it. If I misspeak, stop me. You have a, you have that, you can have that running locally on your machine, you can do work on that. And then you could upload it or.
Oh, okay.
So the, it sounds like the distinction is a license is a web-based license versus potentially a client-based license.
Exactly, that's a good way to put it.
You know, so frankly, so much of things nowadays are moving to strictly web-based, like all your Google stuff is all pretty much purely web-based.
But if you want to walk, work off the grid or disconnected, the web, that doesn't work for you.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to have a client-based license if, say, you wanted to go and take your laptop into the boonies and work on your spreadsheets while you're there.
And that would include our phones, like?
Yes.
So if we have this, if we have a client-based contract, we cannot use our phones, but with a web-based contract, we should through like cellular service be able to.
If you have a client-based access, whatever device you've got, you can use it.
Yeah, you can do, you can do all of them. With web-based, you can only do through a browser or through your device. The client-based, you could do through your browser, through your device, or on your local laptop.
With either option, no matter what device you have, you can use that device. The less expensive option requires that you attach or connect to the web, the internet, before you use it. The client-based says, okay, I can just use it right here.
So I think what would, maybe what would be most useful for us is to tell you kind of like how we would need to use it and then you could advise us.
Well, let me.
Okay, I'll let you finish, that's.
We can do that. So we understand the two license options.
I don't have to understand everything. I don't have to understand everything, I trust you and you.
There, you're second to sit. Trust in me. So considerations. The free email is less secure. And, you know, I'm sitting, before dinner, I'm sitting, reading my, my, my web-based news. What pops up? Gmail and Microsoft Two-Factor Authentication Security Buy Pass. Take action now. The hackers are breaking Gmail and Two-Factor Authorization. So, there you go, right there in the article. Anybody wants to read this, I'll forward it to you. It's about 20 minutes worth of reading. Then you've got document retention requirements that are required by the state of Vermont. And I don't know, three or four years ago, I was looking at how old the documents were on the town's computers and some dated back to 2010. It would take enough space and it takes more time to back them up. So Robin and I went digging and we can't find the document that we originally found this in, but, or pages upon pages, there must have been at least a dozen pages, maybe more. It was listing all these document types and how long you had to keep them. Most were five years or seven years. And I said, I am not waiting through all this stuff to figure out whether it's five years or seven years. Well, just cut it off at seven years, which has led to my, my statements to you down here. So state Vermont document retention requirements are seven years. That means if you're using your personal email for, for, for town business, you can't delete or you should not delete any town emails that are younger than seven years. The other issue which RB Technologies is driving home to me, because they, he said they see it at least once a year. Any email account used for town business is exposed to a public records request or a lawsuit. So if the town is sued or gets a public records request, is that going to happen to Woodbury? Probably not, okay? They can wait for your personal email, I mean, they can weed through everything in it, okay? And there's there's stuff in there that you don't want people to see. Something to consider.
So just don't put it in writing?
You just don't put it in writing.
Any chance that my law lawyer don't put it in writing?
I like the phone, you know, the ones with the string on it?
Yeah, exactly. You can't have those. So the question was asked, can the account be named? Yes, it can. We can have, you know, lizzie@woodburyvermont.org. We can have Chris. Whatever you guys would want that to be. Or it can be nondescript, either one would work. As I said earlier, if it's a named account, when you leave the war, all the email on that account would be archived someplace, so it meets the state requirements. So it could be searched and people could go back and look at it to see what conversations were. But would we then change the name on the account to reflect the new person coming on the select board?
And that, and that member that left would no longer have access to that email account?
That member that left would have no longer have access to that email. They could access it by requesting a copy of an email from, I don't know how we do that, I'd have to find out.
So, but, so then if, if I was working on some projects that held over after I finished my term, I would lose all that email?
You wouldn't lose it. You would have to request access to it. Or if you're working on a project that requires you to access town email, you keep the email and the select board would have to determine that you are eligible to keep that email. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
From my perspective, you guys can choose whatever email you want, okay? That's your decision. It's not going to impact me in any ways. If you want to use free, that's fine. If you want to use some other page, that's fine. If you decide you want to use RB Technologies, woodburyvermont.org through RB Technology, that's fine. You guys have to make that decision, okay? I understand that Chris. I understand that Chris and Lizzie wanna get the town email stuff off your business email accounts or your personal email accounts. Diana has said, I like one email account, I've got my personal business, my personal emails and the town emails all coming to that, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, I think you told me that, right?
Well, would that mean that when I open my email, I get both on one page? Or do I have to go to a separate click on to open the town one?
Depends on how you set it up.
It depends on how you set it up, but if you forward it to your personal email and then you respond, the response is coming from your personal email.
That kind of defeats the purpose, doesn't it?
Yeah, so you have to click on something else.
Okay.
Okay, it's a different icon.
Yeah.
Okay, instead of clicking, the way your email is set up, you go to Chrome and you click on the address for Gmail, your mail comes up. So if you want the town's email, you go down to the Outlook icon, which would be at the bottom of your your screen, your taskbar, and click on that. Does that, that all make sense?
It could be set up to be fairly simple. It's just how you set it up.
Yeah, I was afraid I'd forget.
If we continue to use our personal email though, there's a potential that town emails or select board emails could be not archived.
Oh, they're definitely not archived.
Right, and that's, so that's outside of the law. Using using our personal emails for. We're not archiving it.
I would suggest you seek guidance from the Vermont, what is it?
The U.S. Senate.
So when you say not archived, you mean like, like if we just didn't delete any of them, it's fine, but if we deleted them?
But the town wouldn't have access to any of the emails.
Exactly.
So only, you know, like in order for Robin or Lily to get, once it, suppose you leave the board, they would have to go ask you for a town, an email that you sent from your personal account that was relevant to town business.
Yeah.
So they should, everybody should have access to all the emails we send.
Look at it this way, suppose something happens to you and you're hospitalized incapacitated, we can't get your email. Okay, it it's that type of thing.
Okay.
I have like nine years of emails when I was a select board member and I don't know what to do with them, I haven't deleted them. But I'm not gonna spend my own time archiving them either, somebody who knows what they're doing.
It seems like if they're not deleted, at least they're, if anybody needs them, or if there's a court needs them for something, they can ask.
I didn't mean to say that.
Okay, well, it's true.
Did you have another question?
Nope.
I would love to have them off my computer, to be honest with you, but I don't know how to do that.
Can I just ask them one question?
Yeah, of course.
What are you using for email client or is it web-based?
Uh, it's Gmail.
It's Gmail?
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem. I'm not volunteered for that one.
And before that, it was something else.
Okay.
It's changed.
You were in Comcast for a while, weren't you? Because some of those old, old emails addresses still show up when I try to send you something, I have to remember which one is current.
So I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what the, what I would love to, I should just speak for myself. What I would love to be able to do is be able to use my device when I'm at work to, you know, I'm able to check emails at lunch for town business, because sometimes things come up and, you know, and I don't have a laptop, I don't always have a web, I'm always, not always connected to the internet, so it's, you know, I'm relying on cellular data to check that stuff. If RB managed it, all that would still be possible.
Yes.
Okay.
And what if it was, sorry to interrupt you, would that be possible through Gmail? Because that's what I do right now, through Gmail, so it would be, right?
No, you wouldn't unless we went with a, not if we went with the, any of the licensed subscriptions. So if we went with a, sorry, go ahead, skip.
No, let's just finish.
If we went with the less secure free email.
Yeah.
We could do that, which is I think like the OSSU provides every school board member a, we access it through Gmail.
Is it?
Yep, and somehow they, and this was another question that I had, is once I like left that school board, that email went away, I didn't have access, but they're able to do that with the free email service of Gmail?
I believe they're screening that email to make sure nothing bad comes down it, because it's gotta come through their server.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Yeah, it's all on OSSU.org, right, so.
Yeah, but it's a Gmail account that's named.
Oh, interesting.
I'd have to investigate that.
Okay.
Lizzie, what was your question again?
Uh, just the things that Chris was wanting to be able to do, pretty much using the email program through cell phone service instead of like wifi.
Cell phone and wifi, it doesn't matter.
Uh-huh, so that could be done through Gmail or?
It wouldn't come through Gmail, the town's email would not come through Gmail. It would come through Outlook, which is RB Technologies, and that's either cellular or wifi. I might not be understanding your question.
It's data agnostic, so however you get the data, you'd be able to access it via your mobile device. Gmail is one provider. If they went through this, it would be Microsoft would be the, would be the ultimate sort of handler of the email via, to be managed through RB Technologies. Regardless of who you, any modern mail provider would be accessible through a mobile device. And how we get the data, it, as long as you get access to the internet, you'd be able to access your email automatically through your device, whether it's wifi or whether it's cellular data.
You might be able to, I'll clear it up, but I think, I think what I'm understanding is you would open up a web browser, go to the website to access your emails, as opposed to having an icon that like Gmail that you can click and open it up.
Well, if you were using your mobile device, you would probably configure it through your mobile device's email client and then you would just access it via that. If you're using it on your laptop, then you would probably, you could, depending on the license, you could go to your browser and do it that way. Or you could do it the hard way and do your for browser on your mobile device, I wouldn't recommend that.
All right.
Well, just let me make a broad statement, is if you're going with the M three sixty-five option, no matter whether you choose the the basic or the standard, no matter what device you're using, you will be able to get to your email.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a confusion, I I think the confusion came when you you suggested that there was, you needed to have strong internet access to.
You need a strong connection.
Yeah.
That can be directly to the internet via a wifi connection, or it can be to the internet via a cellular connection.
Okay.
Got it.
I'll be honest with you, I very seldom these days traveling wind up using a wifi connection, unless I'm out on a road that has access to a cell tower, it's, I get into a populated area, my cell phone picks up wifi networks. Can I make one more statement?
Oh, of course.
You know, and 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 these fees that Microsoft charges, they bug the living daylights out of you.
They what? Oh, they bug them, okay.
But, the whole industry, and no matter what industry it is, they're going towards software as a service. So you gotta buy a subscription, and I point to, I don't know what car brand it was, it might have been, what was it on my head?
BMW.
BMW, oh yeah, BMW is one of them, if I need seats in your car, you gotta pay a freaking yearly subscription for it to work.
Yeah?
To me, that's. But it's it's what, this is what they're doing. Until somebody has to class act the suit and says, hey, enough.
So if I'm already paying a Microsoft subscription, this would just be double, right?
You're paying it at home?
Somewhere, I get it on my my bill, my statement. Yeah, yeah.
If we have RB, just kind of looking forward, RB Technologies managing this, they would automatically be archiving all of these emails for us.
Yes.
Yep.
Really?
They they're archived in the cloud.
Yeah, and then once, once, let's say, somebody leaves the board, they, would it be the select board that contacts RB and says, we have to remove that person?
You would contact your IT coordinator, me or whoever that is, and I could go and say, hey, please, remove this email or change this email to another, we need a license, so that email is tied to a license, we would just change the front and name on that email to, so the license would be named.
Um, and as far as that goes, for people leaving the board and someone else taking over the email address, if we didn't go with one of these RB technology options and we just went with a free Gmail account, is that still possible?
The Gmail account, you understand the way that, correct me if I'm going in the wrong direction here. The way, the way Gmail works, the way Google works, you owe that account forever, you can't give it away.
Okay.
So they leave the board, they've got that account, they got all those emails.
Yeah, okay.
I think that, I think they offer, I think Gmail might offer a sort of tiered thing where you can go and get licensed and manage them centrally, but I feel like.
They do, yeah.
I haven't, I haven't messed with that stuff in a long time.
They offer all their services for free.
Yeah.
Just like Microsoft does.
So there may be some way of doing something, intermediate, but.
I would be inclined to go with the option two.
So we're talking about the two hundred and sixteen dollars versus four hundred and fifty dollars?
We're actually talking about whether, I I guess I was talking about going with option two being a paid, uh, secure annual license subscription.
Oh, and then we have to decide.
And then we would have to decide beyond those two.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend you do. Okay, but again, if you choose to go in another direction, it's gonna hurt my feelings, nope. I mean, if I was on the select board, that's what I would do. But you guys are structured, you guys decide best way to spend it.
I mean, it makes sense because it sounds like if we stick with free email, we can't actually do what we're required to do by law, right?
You could do it, the problem is you'd have to manage it individually, like every user would have to go and fight that battle. If something were to happen or the town were to need access to that, well, then it would, they, it would be the individuals fighting that out to deal with that.
Okay.
Part of, part of what you're paying for, if you were to go with the paid, is the ability to not have to deal with all that stuff. It's kind of like, like anything else, you do it all yourself and you have to do it all yourself. And there's a lot of the requirements and considerations that you'd have to address yourself if you wanted to be, you know, in in compliance.
The question is, do you want to become a computer expert or do you want to live your normal life?
Normal life.
So then I think.
Option two.
Okay, yeah.
Option two.
Option two, all right, so everybody says option two, but then, now we have two more decisions to make, or now, we have one more decision to make. And I really, I, I don't know, my gut is telling me to go with the basic, but I don't know why, that that would be better or not.
The the basic is fine, that's gonna give you, you're gonna have to be, have access to the cloud somehow, okay?
Whether that is.
Whether it's cell phone service or, you know, via a wifi service or your home internet.
Got it.
You gotta get to the cloud somehow. And if the internet is down or your home internet is down, you gotta wait till it comes back up before you can access the email.
Well, the thing to access, for access email, if you do that, I mean, to send and receive, you'd have to have it like connected or anyway. It really comes down to whether you want the ability to have stuff on your computer or not. Because if you never want to have anything on your computer, you only just want to access it via the internet, you could do the cheaper version, the web-based version. If you want to be able to have it on your computer, like, oh, I have internet today, I'm gonna download the stuff stored on my computer and then I'm gonna be able to access it offline while I have it and then I'll go and send it back when I'm done. That's sort of the difference, do you have stuff locally on your computer or do you not have stuff locally on your computer? If you've got reliable internet, there's some argument to be made to never have the thing on your computer, because that's one less point of failure. It's one less point of potential access.
I mean, right now, it's mostly that, not entirely, but it's mostly Word documents that are passed, you know, like agendas or something like that, that's in a Word document that gets emailed to, go ahead.
You'd no longer be emailing, it gets posted on one place in the cloud for M three sixty-five, and you all go to that same place to look at it.
Share a link.
Thank you, share a link.
So when the draft of the minutes are ready to be shared with the rest of the board, I don't just send it by email, I have to?
All you do is post it back to the web.
But would Diana have to use a different, you know, because I think she's probably pretty used to using like a Microsoft Excel, I'm assuming.
If it's a Microsoft Word interface or it's a Microsoft Excel interface, it just lives up on the web and they're downloading code onto your device that you're using there, that when you're done with it, the code goes away. It's not persistent or permanent on your device. Did I explain that well?
Well, you'd have a document that's sort of living elsewhere in a server, and then if you wanted someone else to have access to it, there would be a button somewhere on there, you'd share the link, share access to it, and then give, and then they would get like an email that said, hey, here's a link to this thing, and they click on it, it would open that document, but it would be loading that document off a server elsewhere rather than sending a copy of it to you.
The key point is you're working, everybody's working from the same copy.
Would we be able to get training, like I don't see myself being able to just open the program and understand how to do all that?
I will get training.
Okay.
And then I can train you guys.
Training and email.
Oh, sounds like.
Training and email?
Seems like it'll be different.
You'd need training and email.
Like, I'm I'm guessing, like, you won't send an attachment with this, it's something, instead of an attachment, you would be sending a link to the whatever document on the cloud?
You'd click the button that says, share this, and you've got experience with this.
Yeah, so you would, so say you had a Word document, you boot it up, you're running it off the cloud, you do whatever work you wanted to do, there in the upper right corner, you hit the sharing function, you find the user you want to share it with, so Lizzie wants to share it with Chris, you type in Chris, it probably populates his name since he's in the same org. You confirm that, he gets a notification, like an email or whatnot, that says, Lizzie is sharing this document with you, and there's a link. And then Chris would click on that one and open up that document. And generally, what you have is multiple people can have that document open at once.
And you can see the edits in real time, right?
See the edits in real time. Typically, you can see if other people have it open, if in fact they have it open at the same time.
This is basically like Google Drive, right?
Yeah, it's very similar.
Yeah, okay.
The difference would be like now, say, you're working on your computer, you make a document on your computer, you go and you write an email and then you attach it and then you could email that out, well, now there's multiple copies of the thing. There's a copy that you have, then there's a copy that you sent. So if Chris does something to that document now, there's, then he may send that to Diane, now there's more copies. Or maybe he sends it back to people, so now, then you have, so there's advantages and disadvantages of both.
Yeah, but where would my original be?
Well, you wouldn't have the original, because Lizzie has the original.
Yeah, but I don't want to give away my original, I want to have my original and have other people send comments.
Then you go and you bring it, even if you have it on the cloud, you go and bring up a version, you say, this is the original version, I'm gonna title it as the original version, and then I'm gonna have the version for sharing.
But you also, at at least in Drive, you have the option to let people edit or not edit.
Yes.
And this is same with.
The same thing.
Same thing would be true, so you could send your original but not give us the option to edit it.
Oh, or we could just continue to do what we've always done.
I know, this is sounding worse and worse.
We just sent you a copy, did you?
It's actually, it's actually not worse, it's actually a lot easier.
There's advantages and disadvantages, I deal with both systems.
Yeah, I mean, the stuff that we share is is pretty simple.
It is, I I simply want to make sure that our email, we're not using our personal emails anymore. And beyond that, if if we can't continue to do what we're doing with a town email and we need to use this kind of cloud-based system, then I think we should do it. But if there's an option to use a town email. But if there's an option to use a town email, but continue to, you know, Diana types up the minutes and emails a PDF to us, we look at it and, you know, correct it at the meeting, that kind of thing, that would be the most simple answer for us.
So if we have a new email address, that doesn't mean we have to change the way we do things.
Correct. You can have a new email address, and you can handwrite an agenda, take a picture of it.
But we still, we still need to buy a license to do that. We just wouldn't, we just wouldn't utilize all options of this license.
It's recommended in the, you know, call before we walk, before we run.
Yeah.
So I will, I mean, if that's the direction you want to go, I will. You don't want to do the trick, do you?
What, what direct, what, what direction are you talking about now? What are you talking?
If that, if the direction you want to go is to buy the basic license, I will commit to figuring out the options to use it.
I guess I, I would suggest that if you recommend this, that we do the higher cost. I mean, you're talking about a couple hundred dollars, you know, it's the cost of one bike sign. I think if it's gonna give us the best options for.
It's per license, right?
Yeah. Well, no, it's, it's a total difference.
$450 per three, per year. Other, other, the other one is $216.
Let me verify I did my math right. Let me verify I did my math right. So the one, the one license is.
$72 now.
$12.50 per month, $150 per year, $12.50 around, $450 per year for three years. I did not make any math mistakes. So you, you, what you're saying is there's $234 a year difference. Let me, let me make one comment. If you were to go with the basic license and decide that you need more function, you can't upgrade that till it expires. It's, it's good for one year. They made that clear with me on a stalk of him the other day.
What, um, what package do all the other town employees have? Like, you guys and?
They've got the, they've got the more expensive ones.
Okay, okay.
So the garage, and the listers, and the delinquent tax collector, and, and these guys, they all have.
They're more expensive.
$1,250 a month, $1,250 a month, I mean.
Yes.
How do you find it?
They don't.
They don't see any difference?
Well, they are not using the function yet.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
So we can, we can get this, and these are a lot of options that we would have in part of that package, but we don't have to use them.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
See, just, let me also mention, so, you know, we're talking about the select board that's gotta be trained. We're talking about the clerk's office has gotta be trained. I'm not really worried about Alfie. I need training.
You're on your own.
For sure. I should have looked to see if he was here before I said, your outlook is working here?
Yes.
Okay. The library needs to be trained. So, and I'm not sure whether the new guy in the library has a lot of experience with this. I have to ask him, because he said he would take care of it. We'll see. So you guys tell me which way you want to go, and I will, you know, figure out how we're gonna get trained in this. I mean, if they say, alright, we will send somebody out to do the training, that's another option, so we can all pick the same day, as opposed to me doing it and me doing it some evening. I mean, you guys will have to tell me what's convenient for you.
We have these work meetings.
Right.
Perfect time.
I mean, I would, personally, my thought is this is like a brand-new thing. I would go with the cheaper option, since it's an upgrade from what we're doing now. And it doesn't look to me like there's anything on the more expensive option that would be important for me to have necessarily. That's just my thoughts.
So did you also, already, Chris, did you say you also wanted the cheaper option?
I, I said my gut was to lean towards that, as, as like, we work on this for a year. I mean, it's gonna take us a while to get trained up, to use all the, all the features of it. We're still gonna be able to operate like we have been. We just might have the ability to like, expand how we use it. And after a year, we could upgrade if we thought there was more reason to do that. But I do think.
We've already spent $200 worth of time just now. Free time.
But I'm not gonna use it for investment.
And I, I do, I do think whatever we do, this sets a precedent for future select boards, right? Like, this is, this is gonna be the way that, whether we're here or not, this is be the way it is.
Well, if you want to set precedent for future select boards, A, you should establish a policy that they have to use the town email, okay? And that prevents people from going off.
So if, these other guys are doing the premium edition and we're doing the basic, there're gonna be some limitations as to what we can share back and forth?
No.
No? Okay.
They just have the icon on their desktop, which gives them, in other words, what you're, what you're not doing is you're not having to go out to the web, like when you click on the Chrome to go to the very state websites. You're not having to do that for your, for your email or your Word documents or your Excel. It's there. Okay, which I think is, given the volume that you guys deal with, is easier for you.
For people who that's their day job, it makes sense. Like, for instance, when it comes time to look at and learn things, if I'm still in this position, I don't need the more expensive version. I'm fine, just do it.
I'd have to go look through and see what's in there.
If they have it, because I've got my own access to the other stuff, so I, you know, so that might be something to think about. If there's any policy written, what happens when renewal period comes up, what do people actually need? Because obviously, like, folks that are operating in the clerk's office when they're back to day job, so to speak, they have, it makes a lot more sense for them to have access to it on their little machines, but for those of us, mostly if we've got email, we're probably good to go for the vast majority of stuff.
Question. Am I one user or two users? Since I have a desktop and a laptop.
You are five users. You have.
Me personally.
Excuse me, let me back up a second. Each license allows you to use the license on five different devices. So you can use it on your, your desktop computer, you can use it on your laptop computer, okay? You can use it on however many devices you've got, your phone, your desktop computer, if you've got a laptop computer. It's the same for the rest of it.
And that doesn't matter which one of the ones that they go with?
I don't understand your question.
The cheaper or the more expensive?
Doesn't matter, no, I believe it says.
You already have the more expensive.
Probably the five devices.
No, I'm just wondering.
That probably applies to the more expensive one, because you wouldn't be downloading it across multiple devices on the other one, just be using our web access. It's all associated with one account, one account, one license. You could put up different licenses, but it's still.
Okay.
So my question is, do we need to make a motion to ask?
That'd be good.
Yeah, would be good, okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we go with the M365 Business Standard, 150 per year, $1,250 per month per person, $450 per year for three users. You can vote against that.
Any discussion?
I'd rather go with the cheaper one.
You always do.
I know, I'm cheap, I'm cheap, Diana. I don't, I'm just wondering, can I ask you, like, is there a particular thing, you know, in the little blurb of what it offers, is there something specific that you see in the more expensive one that you feel like we need?
No, I just think the options are there. If we're gonna put this time into learning this new system, it'd be just as good to have, have the options. Although I'd just email for me, but you never know.
So I have a couple of questions. Is there such a thing as a group rate if a number of town officials?
Hell no.
Okay.
I think that would, that would be a smart thing to do.
And is the training that you keep on mentioning, so nobody has been trained in what we're deciding tonight?
I believe so.
Nobody has been trained on the details of how to use it.
Okay.
Do I understand how to use it from a global perspective? Yes. And I did not realize John had experience in it, but obviously he has experience using it.
Yeah, I thought we were just getting new email addresses.
So I, there's a motion on the table, we're still in discussion. My, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we went with the business standard, it seems like we would have a lot of, a lot of pieces of that, that would probably not be utilized right away.
Correct.
And that the basic might, we would at least start off and have, there would still be things, I think, in the basic that we probably wouldn't utilize right away, and that we could grow into the standard, but I think at least we save a couple hundred bucks at this point. After a year, we could upgrade.
The difference, I think, is, and John can re-explain it, is that if you want to be able to sit with something on your laptop and do some work and be in the middle of the woods, you're not gonna do that with the basic.
Right. So there's a motion on the table. Any other discussion?
So just want to mention that I already have Word Excel on my laptop and my desktops. So somebody who didn't have that, that would be a bonus for them?
So you have it from some other source, like you've been paying for it personally.
Right.
So if you were to get this license, you'd be paying, so you, you already have that.
Right. But I'm, what I'm saying is, somebody that doesn't have that, if they just got a new laptop or something and they didn't buy that, then, that would be a bonus for them, right?
They could have it through this, yes, you could have it.
While you're a town official.
Right. Now, the tricky part is, once again, it goes to, if you have all these accounts tied together, and then you're doing town work, even if, and then you're doing personal work, if you're not careful, you can mix the two and then expose things one way or the other. So that's true for all this stuff.
I guess that's one thing, I have to clarify this. If you had the standard version, and you have the icons on your desktop, you could use that software to do personal work, as long as you stored it elsewhere.
I hope so.
With the cloud-based version, you can't do that.
So I should have known better and made a lot more time for this on the agenda. But I think we could vote on Diana's motion, which is to purchase the M365 Business Standard. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
No.
No.
I, just a quick snippet. I'm almost certain that both of my nonprofit jobs, you know, full-time, 40-hour, usually more, we, we had the business basics, so just like strictly working on OneDrive, not having any apps on, you know, a desktop or a laptop. And, you know, it, it, it's, I think it's fairly easy to learn, you know, realistically looking at it. What you guys would be working with is learning a couple buttons for, you know, sharing in a different way, so.
Do you all know Word?
I mean, medium, yeah.
Excuse me, let me rephrase that. Do you all use Word that are comfortable with it?
Describe comfortable. I'm medium comfortable.
Well, I mean.
I mean, I can use it. I can type a document. I struggle sometimes with like saving it, getting it where I want it to go.
Okay. And the same with Excel?
I don't use that at all.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if you know that stuff, the decline's gonna work.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of the M365 Business Standard at $450 a year, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No. Please say no.
No.
I just thought I'd mix it up a little bit.
All right, so how about an alternative motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to purchase the.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
M365 Business Basic Package.
Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Motion passes, and.
I will copy. I will send an email to RB Technologies tomorrow.
Do we need to choose our, our names? Do we need to choose our names?
Yes, you can choose your names.
Okay.
I kind of like, just to make it easy, I kind of like that Diana.paduzzi or.
You can't have that name.
That'd be awesome if I could.
Oh, I've had it for 74 years.
Or she just mix it up.
Okay. But do you want Chris or Christopher or Chris dot Casey or?
Something like that.
Chris dot Casey, C-A-S-Y.
Yep.
Lizzie or Elizabeth?
I mean, Lizzie dot Higgins.
Lizzie dot Higgins?
L-I-Z-Z-Y.
L-I-Z-Z-Y, yeah.
H-I-G-G-I-N-S?
Yep.
Okay, Diana dot Paduzzi, or do you have something special for me?
No, that's fine.
Thank you guys a lot for all of the information.
Yeah, thank you.
And the work gathering it too.
And for the patience with our questions and our, appreciate it.
I worked as a, I did, for the last 10 years of my tenure, I worked as an educator, so I was teaching and loving it. Sort of miss it, but.
Well, we'll try to make it up to you.
Yeah, thanks. Don't take that as a challenge.
Can I do one quick thing before John starts?
Sure.
There's a resolution for the annual appointment for representation for the NEKCV Governing Board, which was CB Fiber. And John Reed is gonna be the representative, Michael Gray is gonna be the alternate. And if Chris could sign that.
One more quick thing. I slipped my mind. The first year, Randy applied for a grant to replace the cameras in the clerk's office. And that grant came through at only 50%. And in discussions, Robin has had discussions with the Lizzie and Pam. They decided that the existing cameras are fine, so we're going to basically anticipate that grant. The camera cost was roughly $5,000. The grant came through at $2,550, and then it came in at $2,500. I'm, I'm comfortable. I told them whatever they wanted to decide, just they have to feel safe. That's where we are with that.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna change it at this point.
At this point, no.
So I can go.
You could stay.
I don't know.
You lie, why ask? Why not?
You may.
Guys, it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Take good care, see you all.
What would they do? What would we do without you?
Well, it'd run a lot smoother.
Don't forget your coat.
Want, you want some advice? Don't get old.
John, thanks for coming.
Sure.
Thank you, John, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Buyouts. Good news on my emails, so hopefully none of this is surprise. But we have the initial approval on both projects. That's the initial approval for the, this is FRFC, Flood-Resistant Community Fund, so whenever anybody says FEMA, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm not touching, haven't been touching anything FEMA, so this is gonna begin with FRFC. So this is the Yellow House, Pathetic property, on the east side of the road, and then the fire station. So now we have a number of things that we're gonna need to do before we can really get going. Lily, I'm gonna need to send you a link to some survey they, they have to have us fill out, and should be done by the financial person, including the treasurer, so if, what's, what's your email?
treasure@woodburybt.org.
Easy enough. I will forward that. Easy enough. I will forward that to you. The other thing that they said they needed was a copy of the Certificate of Liability Insurance. So I assume we probably have that, so they need a copy.
For the whole town or for the... I mean, with the fire department, it might be a little complicated.
This is for the town because the town-
Oh, just the town general?
This is town, this is like boilerplate, this side of things. Because ultimately, the process is, the state gives the money to drive all of this. Gives the money to the town. The town is the purchaser of these properties. So the property would then be in the town's name eventually, and then the state provides the money to do the demolition, the restoration, that sort of thing. So those two things are just the town liability. So a copy of the Certificate of Liability Insurance, so I'm going to need that. And then I'll send Lily you a link to do their little DPS risk survey. Okay, so that's the, the easy stuff. The slightly more complicated stuff is we need to nail down and resolve to Vermont Emergency Management Satisfaction the ownership of the building and the lot of the fire station. Because as it's currently looks on the parcels, the lot is owned by the town already. But my understanding is the building is not owned by the town already. So we just need to nail that down. And, and then what would happen, like right now, there's two properties, near as I can tell, there's two properties on that lot. There's the, or I should say, two structures on that lot. There's the town hall and then there's the fire station. So what they are asking for, as you saw in the email, a title search. The town, through its attorney, will provide a title search to Vermont Emergency Management, which shall include a determination of legal ownership of both the building and the land.
Now, where, what are you looking at? Where are you looking at?
Looking at the email that I forwarded to the-
Oh, the email, okay, I have, okay, I've got the, okay.
Let's see, this determination also confirms that the fire station is the only building on the parcel, which you don't expect it to be. So the idea here is when this, when to do this, there would be a number of covenants that would need to be placed on the deed, basically. Can't build on it. Well, obviously, that doesn't apply to the whole property, but we would need to invite a piece that the fire station is-
And there probably will need to be a subdivision.
Yes, there would, there, there would need to be a subdivision. So in that email, funding for any necessary subdivision will require grant modification, must be approved by VEM, which implies that it can be paid by VEM. But, so the first step to move this would be, we need to do a title search, provide it to them to nail down the ownership of the property and the building and all that sort of jazz. Because any purchase of the, of it would not, like if the town already owns the land, then the purchase would include the land and you buy out.
Really? Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
We're not going to pay the town for the land or whatever.
All right, yeah, that makes sense.
Before we can do the appraisal, we need to nail down the ownership so that the appraisal can be accurate.
The appraisal.
Yeah.
And do you suspect that someone other than the town already owns the building?
Fire station, or-
The fire department? Okay.
My memory is, when we were doing stuff with the town hall, is that the town does not own the property and because there's a clause in for the town hall, and if it's not used by the town, it reverts back to the store.
Subsequent stuff. There's subsequent stuff that Robin and I have been finding.
This is all the funky stuff that we need to nail down before we're going to get, be able to get somebody else to give us money to do something.
Right.
So hence, that's why they're asking for the title search. But the idea would be, once we nail down who owns what, then we can figure out who can get paid for what and how much can be paid. If the town already owns the land, then VEM is not going to pay for the town to buy the land. But if the town owns the land and the fire department owns the building, VEM would pay for the purchase of the building. And then, and the implication is, they would potentially pay for the subdivision so that the covenants would only apply to that piece of dirt that's underneath the building.
What if the town doesn't own the land?
If the town doesn't own the-
It has to, well, yeah.
Then it's actually simpler. Because it would make, depending on what the land is, because once again, right now, the parcel is showing both buildings on it. And really, the only thing in question is the fire station. But the town doesn't own the land, then how is that described? Then they would, like, the initial estimate or the initial thing that was put forward was under the assumption that town did not own the land. Because what they're, what they would be doing would be providing the money for the town to buy the whole thing. Now, if the town owns the land, they're not going to provide. So that would need to be figured out, and then the appraisal would be done under that understanding. And the appraisal would inform the budget of the rest of the project.
Are we under any, is there like a timeline that we should be aware of or?
I'm not aware of a timeline, but of course, the longer we go, the more money gets used up, the more things change. And I would really like to get this moving.
Yeah.
Ideally, so the other thing is, that came up in a meeting that we had with VEM was, there is funds available for management of this, these projects. And they suggested contacting RBC and see if they would want to take on management of the project.
Who's that? R, R, PC?
RPC, regional money.
Oh, okay, oh.
Because apparently, they do stuff like this.
They do project management, right?
And so theoretically, there's money in the grant that could pay for some entity to manage this, which, that would be fine, but we need to get it a little bit further on before we could do something like that.
So could we get somebody locally to manage it?
Do you have any suggestions? I'm sure we could.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure that that's a possibility.
This is very impressive, by the way.
Well, mostly I just put in the numbers that they told me to.
Oh, really? Oh.
Do you need something from us to be able to move forward?
We, the town needs to do a title search on the land and the building and whatnot. Through that email that I sent? It's the bold section.
Okay.
That's what we need. That's the part. Because ideally, we would iron that part out and get it to the point where we need to start doing appraisals and, and that would be the point at which, if we are going to have somebody manage the thing, that would be the point to sort of turn it over to that, potentially that individual. Not to say that we don't have to have somebody manage the thing. I don't necessarily feel like I've got the, you know, the experience to do all this stuff. Theoretically, good, you know. But that's, the good news is, there is money in the project that could be used for that purpose.
So the title search?
Yeah.
Is that just on the land, or is that on the land and the building?
Prior to the appraisal, the town, through its attorney, will provide title search to VEM, Vermont Emergency Management, which shall include a determination of legal ownership of both the building and the land.
So why doesn't the fire department have to do the title search on the building, since they own the building?
The... Because, because the town is the entity that would be trying to buy this thing.
All these things like, title search are in, in your budget here, so that's, would be paid for, right? Supposedly, or?
No, not in this, not in this. They would be, like, so, for example, as a, as a, the difference would be the title search for the Shattuck property. That would be done as part of the purchasing process. This is like, they're not even sure they can do this. And so we need to nail down the ownership before they can even move forward this as a project. In fact, one of them said if this is a FEMA thing, they wouldn't even touch it because of the confusion around who owns what.
Okay.
But VEM is like, but we want to try to make things happen. We don't want people to be left with throwing up their hands. And so we would like this project to go forward. So, but in order for us to do this, because, because the parcels, as they, as they, I mean, they're looking at the parcel viewer the same as I was. And it says Town of Woodbury on the parcel.
Do you want this? Get me this one.
Unless it's something different.
No. I don't know if you've seen it. It's a site plan that was made years ago.
So Diana, normally when, a situation like this, when we need a title search, is that a select board member that calls the town lawyer and asks for that to occur, or?
Uh, yeah.
That's how, that's how it all happens? Okay.
We could ask our regular lawyer, or we could find someone else. More locally. Specializes in real estate, maybe?
The hope would be, we could resolve this, and then, once you got to that point, then sort of bundle, run both projects.
Yeah, right.
Sort of simultaneously, because there's going to be, you know, bidding and a lot, you know, there's going to be, it's going to be a process to, you know, go through, to do the appraisals, to do demolition, bid all that, and do all the things. So the hope would be to get this figured out and then run, after that point, run projects simultaneously.
I, I'll make a motion that we, the select board engages the town lawyer to do a title search. Is there a parcel number for that? That handy? On the lot owned- On the, um...
So... Look by 330, book five, oh shoot, what's the page on that one?
Well, I would just take that section straight off that email.
Yeah.
Because that's what they're asking for.
As our motion.
No, I mean, any, any communication with any of them?
With the lawyer, yeah, okay. How have you been referring to it? That's how I'll refer to it in the motion, this lot.
I haven't.
Okay. The-
Factors a lot of confusion because the numbers are only one number apart between the Shattuck property and-
Oh, yeah.
So the lot where the current fire station, or the, the old fire station sits?
The original fire-
The original fire station. Thank you for clarification. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Who wants to call the lawyer?
I will, but I mean, I don't know if we need to hire Jerry Tarrant or Michael Tarrant to do this. I think we could find somebody who's more available and specializes in real estate, but-
Would they have to have the right credentials for the title search to help wait?
No, anybody can do it. Any lawyer can do a title search, it's just they tend to specialize. You're going to have to look between... You're going to have to go back to page, I'm sorry.
Is this a span number that's got like three digits, three digits and five digits?
Yeah.
On the top, on the, on the parcel viewer, it's 780-248-10761. That's, I'm just looking at the, the parcel viewer.
You got that written down?
Yep.
Between, we're going to have to go back into volume, book five.
Do you want it?
No, we'll just revisit this. Bring this to our next meeting, revisit this again. Thank you for doing that, Diana.
Yeah.
I'm honestly a little surprised that they were, with all the noise and all the news and everything else. They actually said that they had some, they alluded to that they had other money and were interested in, in potentially doing other mitigation, flood mitigation in Woodbury. So we kind of left the door open to having someone come out from their department and walk around. So if we, if they, if we have the opportunity to do that, would any of you want to be?
Michael's been working on that for years.
The two, the two grants that we had in the works for flood mitigation, one of them, the federal funding was pulled from that, so that one's dead in the water. And then the other one, which would address washouts to the Brookbank that affect the Calhoun Road, we did receive the grant award, but the funding frozen at the moment, and they have a waiver and to try to-
Well, this, this was a comment that was made in a meeting that we had about two weeks ago. Or, it was right before they sent us the approval. They basically said, we're going, we are going to approve these, we have some questions. So I had a call with them and this, and the questions were really all around the ownership of the building and the land. Because we will, if we move forward, we'll have to eventually subdivide, so this stuff only applies to a particular piece of land that needs to. But this is a comment that we made on that call. This was about, the one we're going to discuss, because right before they sent the email of this stuff in. So, we'll see.
Thanks, good news.
I have communicated with Mr. Shattuck. He's still in favor of moving forward on his lot. He hasn't touched it or done anything with it, obviously. It's still looks the same, or worse.
Well, I've got to say, when I was working on another project, I would have been dead in the water if Skip, Lindsay hadn't helped with like the RFPs for the site work and things like that, because I all had to go through, you know, the bid process and all that stuff. I don't, he's pretty busy now, but he's not here, so I'm throwing his name out there.
There, like I said, there is apparently some amount or some percentage that's earmarked or that can be used for management of it. So if there is someone who'd be interested, you know.
I'll think about that.
Something to think about, especially once we get this stuff figured out. I'll, clearly, I'll send you the link for the survey. Went to the point where I actually had to do stuff and decide who should be doing it. And it's like, I guess it's 10 or 15 minutes, I don't know. And like I said, it looks like boilerplate to them checking boxes. And Robin, if you could send me the insurance thing, I'll, I'll send you an email as a reminder. They actually sent me a follow-up email today asking for this stuff. I get it, I'm going to select work tonight. That's all I have on that, unless you have questions. Were you in the middle of making a motion or didn't?
We did, yeah.
Can I change the subject if we're done on that?
Please.
I need to update the Emergency Management Plan. I brought hard copies of last year's. It's not a lot to it, but I need to update it for this year. I believe they changed the process. It used to be that they had to send them to, what's the acronym that they used to have to send it? Oh, Regional Planning Commission, yeah. So it used to have sent to that by May 1, now they're supposed to go somewhere in the state by June 1. But in any case, if you, I'll just give you these from last year.
Thank you.
So anything from there from last year, probably update. But I would be updating it to the extent that I know. If you have any thoughts or comments or corrections beyond the obvious, feel free to email me.
Okay.
Whatever. So I'm hoping to get this updated and kicked over in the next couple of weeks. So we're not a huge rush, but-
You try to do this in the next two weeks, so?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll submit it before the next meeting.
In, in two weeks, okay.
So if you get any feedback you have by the next, within the next two weeks, that would be great.
Okay, great.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, John, thanks. All good news.
Good news, really. Good news, really.
Alfie.
Yes.
Still awake?
Road Commissioners, where you still. We got a couple of things that I'm remembering to bring up.
Yeah.
But we can talk about general stuff first.
Generally, it's just we've been grading wind again and clean snowstorms and frozen ground. But it looks like after tomorrow and Wednesday, it looks like it's clearing out for a while, as far as we can see anyways.
Yeah.
So we'll be grading. We'll be putting gravel where we need it. So I can say as far as what we've been doing. Trucks are holding up. We've got the excavator in the shop right now doing a bunch of work to it. Changing wells and fixing things that have failed over the periods of time that have been not been fixed. So that's taking some time, but we gotta have it. We're gonna do it. So I want to get a copy of the panel. Other than that, I mean, this business that we're involved in, I haven't had a chance to start the process of the new truck. I really need to. There's no big cramp in time, but I just haven't had a chance to do that. But it's on my list. So one of the things that I think that you might be referring to is we've had some issues with driveway culverts. So I guess I need guidance from the town, what they want to do for that. Particularly their, their residents' driveways and sometimes they affect the flow of the town water. So I just. I want to know how you guys want to do.
I mean, when people build a, put in a new driveway, they have to put in the culvert, right?
Right.
But a lot of these are probably old.
A lot of them, that's the problem. A lot of them are old. A lot of them are undersized. A lot of them need to be replaced. Some of these residents are, are, all the residents, they need to be, they need, you know, they've been in the ground for a long time.
So I, this came up because I, I got an email from, Robin forwarded an email from a resident who, and you can help me if I have the details wrong, but the, their driveway during last year's flood, right? Or the culvert plugged.
It's every, every flood.
Every flood. Their culvert plugged, washed their driveway out. And, but it was a result of town water, correct, coming down from above? And Alfie had said that Callis would, in certain instances, offer to do the work on those culverts as long as the homeowner purchased them. Because they prevent, you can explain it better, but the philosophy being that it is helping maintain roads. But it would be, it would be obviously up to the, up to the resident. And specifically at this point, their, their rock wall was damaged too, or maybe there was a repair of the road or something like that.
Yeah, well, we, this, this winter, this, one of the first rainstorms that we had in America was froze up. The big culvert that we, that we replaced because of the flood. Last year, we replaced it with a three foot culvert. Well, this winter it froze. The ice kept backing up, backing up, backing up until it was, was not running. And then we got the warm up and the rain and a lot of water came down. Incidentally, washing out their culvert. Their culvert couldn't take it. Either frozen or full of gravel, whichever it is. Also, I think it's too small. So I feel like that culvert needs to be replaced for all those reasons, all those reasons that I just mentioned. And he, he and I have had problems because he thought I was not fixing his driveway fast enough. The first flood in 2023. So this is partially why I want the select board to make a decision how to deal with these culverts. And it's not just this one. It's, there's, we have hundreds of them around town. That comes out of somebody's driveway and it's affecting the road either positively or negatively.
I mean, I feel like in this case, because the town's culvert didn't, it failed in this, in this incident.
The towns, when you say town's culvert.
The big three foot culvert that Alfie replaced.
That's under, that's under somebody's driveway, right?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
This was further out the road.
There? I don't know where this is, like just to put it in perspective.
Cabot Road, just below the, the old entrance to the quarry.
Okay, below the old entrance to the quarry. Okay.
So there was a bit, there was a culvert there that used to be an eighteen inch. For years and years, it was eighteen inch. The last two floods, it was overtaken. So I said, well, let's, we gotta go figure culvert. So we put in a three foot. Which ordinarily is fine, but this year, for some reason, because of the weather, it backed up with ice.
Okay.
So then when the warm and the rain came, it wouldn't take the water. Cause it's more, you know, it's a six inch pipe because of the ice.
So it washed out their culvert.
So then it came down, down the side of the road, past our culvert, our three foot culvert, washed out their driveway.
Okay.
So in the process of trying to save the road and make the water go where it's supposed to, we tried to dig their culvert. And in the process, they had a stone wall right on the upper side of their culvert and the stone wall got violated. It was, my opinion, it was kind of built over the top of the culvert, so it was bound to fail anyways. Anyways, we take the blame for that, whatever.
We're gonna repair it.
We can repair the, the stone wall, but it has to be done after the culvert is replaced. So I need to know how, can I, can I ask them to pay for the culvert and I install it? I, I don't know how the board wants to pursue this.
How did it work in Callis? Did most people not have a problem with paying? I mean.
Most people were okay with it. Yes, they were, they were okay because they're not, they don't have to, it's really their responsibility, the full job. They have to hire a contractor to end by the, by the culvert. This way, they're just buying the culvert and the town gets to put it in the way it sounds is that it's proper and.
And we get to repair the rock wall at the same time.
At the same time.
Do you feel like it could snowball and every other person in town might be like, oh, I'm gonna buy a free culvert? Or I'm gonna buy a culvert and then the town will have to do free work.
It's possible, but I think there's gonna be some discretion there. I mean, somebody has to have discretion as to how far to go with it.
Right, right.
In this case, I think that's why I feel like this case might be a good reason to say yes. It's because it was a failed town culvert that caused, that caused the problem in the first place.
And that's where the discretion.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's just the culvert that is rotted out because, because they neglected it for all these years, then the town shouldn't, they don't need to help that out. They don't need to help with that.
Or I would also say if it was a major flooding event or something like that, we can't replace everybody's culverts and, right? But this was like.
What does a culvert like that cost? Or the culvert itself?
Nowadays, it's probably like three, four hundred bucks.
Oh.
But if you hire a contractor.
Oh, God, yeah.
You're into, you know, two thousand probably. So I think, I, I don't know, I don't know what their reaction will be, these particular people. Cause like I said, I've, I've, we've kind of had our problems.
I'm happy to make that phone call if you want. If you want. I'm happy to let you do it too.
I'm okay. If I get an answer from you guys, then I will approach them again and try. I mean, I have to do, I have to get along with them if I'm gonna put it in.
Sure.
So I'm happy to try to break the ice with that if I get your honor. If they're willing to pay for the culvert, we will put it in. But it does start, it starts a precedence because other people may say, I'll buy a culvert and you come to mine.
Right.
Before you know it, the highway crew doesn't have time to do it.
The town has done that in the past. My watch were. There was a property up on East Till and it was a heavy rain that this wasn't the last couple of summers. But a brook by their house came down, ran and did the town ditch. I did everything fine. But their culvert washed out and the driveway washed out. The ditch washed out quite a bit too. And a former road foreman basically did the total repair and put in. I don't think they paid for the culvert. I don't know. He just, he just fixed it. So there is.
Well, I guess I have to ask, not knowing what, who is involved with this case, but would paying for the culvert be a big deal?
Would, would I, do I think they would pay for it?
Right. Yeah.
I don't know. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a deciding factor. I mean, if that was my driveway, I would be happy to pay for it if the town wanted to install it.
Sure.
I, that's a great deal. Why would I turn that down?
Right.
But I don't know. Maybe they think that it's a town's problem altogether.
Or they just don't have anyone. And I think that, I think that they'll be receptive to this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I do.
I'm trying to, I'm just trying to figure out where it is.
I mean, it, it makes sense to me. I just feel like we'll have to remember why we said yes.
I think we will.
So that if somebody comes and wants a similar deal, you know.
Special services.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think you should have, yeah, you should use your judgment too, if you can really feel that it's not because of neglect when the landowners.
Yeah. Well, like I said, if we hadn't had our, our problem in 2023, the first flood, which I thought was unreasonable, I probably would have done the same scenario that Michael just explained. I probably would have brought a culvert there, put it in. Problem would have been solved. But he came at me with a tack and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I'm not okay with that. And so I'm not gonna.
He came at you with a what?
As a tack.
Oh, okay, a tack, okay.
So I'm not gonna bend the rules and go out of my way to help him when he's, when he's doing that. So this might be a way to heal that, is my guess. And if they don't want to play ball, then the culvert stays the way it is. And the town still has a problem. I'll send you. I need this.
So it sounds like, yes, go ahead and approach them and see if they'd like to do that. And the other thing that I, I had is a, I had a conversation with a gentleman on Amesworth Road. And it was in regards to this, the, the, the most recent heavy snowstorm. This gentleman was concerned that the road wasn't plowed. I talked to Alfie. Alfie said that he knew that if he went in there with the big truck, it would make more of a mess than anything else. And made the smart decision not to go and do that. This gentleman emailed me back and said, well, if that road is such a problem, is there a plan to do work on that road? I spoke to Alfie and he said there, you know, that road will have worked into it. But I, but we don't have a timeline for that, right? Or not on a schedule.
I can commit to some time this summer.
You, you don't, I mean, we don't have to.
There is a culvert that's, that's plugged.
Yeah.
On that road.
Okay.
Is it on that road or is it on the driveway?
It's, it crosses the road.
Oh, okay.
It crosses the road. But that, honestly, that wasn't the problem. It's where I go up and turn around.
Yeah.
That last house, I turn around on their lawn.
Oh, yeah.
So if I was to drive up in there, as soft as it was, we'd be up there raking, raking grass and sawed out right now. So I pulled up to that road and I looked up at, as far as I could see, it was already plowed. Somebody plowed it with a personal truck. So to me, it's only that last driveway that was, that didn't get plowed. Right? I mean, it was, cause they went up to Chance's driveway and a little bit beyond. And I think Tom's was plowed also, but whatever. It was just that little bit that the town didn't plow that one day. And I did, I didn't plow it because I knew it was gonna make a mess.
Yeah.
There are other roads that I didn't plow the same way. I knew it was gonna be fifty the next day. The snow's gonna be gone. It's, you know.
Very reasonable response.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just need to respond to this gentleman about that. And I'll just say that, you know, it's on the schedule for hopefully this summer to, to do some work up there.
Yeah.
But that was the day it cleared six or eight inches off my truck. But there was only like an inch and a half in the ground because the ground is so warm that. That's why I thought it was soft. There was quite a bit of snow, but the ground was soft, right?
Yeah, I think that was a smart decision.
So, yeah, just, you can tell them that it's on the schedule for some work there this summer.
I'll do that.
The work that we do won't be correct or right because nobody on the road crew is qualified.
Sometimes you can't win.
That one I could figure out.
That's all I have in terms of the road commissioners report and.
He sent me, he just messaged emails too.
I do. I received an applicant, application in the, from the town office for an employee. He's looking for part-time. I don't know, can I say his name here?
Well, we, I did mention having a little executive session later, but you know, it's. I guess we could just talk about it in general, having to, the idea of hiring someone part-time, starting to get them.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we, I think we can use somebody. We could have used somebody all winter, more so. But in the summertime, certainly we can, you know, for hauling gravel for most of his experience, this person's experience is truck driving. So that's what I would, that's what I would use him for.
And part-time is, is it twenty hours a week or whatever?
I think it's, it has to be under thirty-two, right?
Under thirty-two.
It sounds right.
Longer than thirty, no.
I think it's, I don't know. It might be thirty. I could be corrected, but thirty, thirty-two, somewhere in that.
Do you get the impression, the impression that this individual might be interested in staying around for the winter?
It's possible.
It's possible.
If he, if he fills in, if he likes it and it works out.
Okay.
It's the same with any, with any applicant though. You don't know, you don't know until you, until you do some research or find out. This person does have a large employment list.
I think that this, do you mind sticking around for an executive session so that we can evaluate the application in not?
Sure.
I don't necessarily know that is required, but it seems to me if we're gonna talk about a person's qualifications, it's something that's meant for executive session.
Okay, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. We can try to do that before we do some of the other.
Well, the rest of the stuff on here is basically road stuff anyways. You're gonna stay for that, right?
Sure.
So we did meet that scoping committee. I, I jumped in on that meeting. And the long and the short of it was is that there was, we went through, Skip Lindsay kind of had a, surprise, surprise, like a pretty detailed list of like how we should approach things.
Was there a chart?
Oh, oh, there was no flow chart, but there was definitely a good organizational. It was great. And he had one for the town offices.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, John. One section for the town offices and one for the roads. I think it's easier to talk about the roads because it's a pretty short discussion. In that it really became clear that we do not have to, for a lot of the culvert work that Alfie and his crew can do or feels like they can do, we do not have to put that out for an RFP.
We don't have to what?
Write an RFP for that. We also had the discussion, I was suggesting, I didn't want to overwhelm the road crew with all of these bigger projects. When, you know, there's been, the last few years, it's been a struggle to like kind of just do some of the maintenance stuff. So in that vein, Alfie and Michael and, and Michael was there, so you can jump in too. And Skip, we're going to get together to identify from Alfie's experience and Michael's, some of the culverts that are the most egregious or in the most in need of work and those bigger projects. And make sure that they jive with the map that was provided. And make sure that they jive with the map that was provided. Remind me where that, where that map came from.
It's a Vermont culvert.
Inventory. Yeah, all right. And to use those numbers and that some of those projects. Once we got, have those identified, whether there's six or, you know, six of them that need to go out to bid. Or whether, whatever that is, we can, we can approach it that way.
I think our, our goal is to prioritize which ones and get a set and then pursue. You know, come up with costs for them and whether there would need a H and H study.
You need to start asking for the H and H studies now.
Uh, we need to figure out what, what. We need to determine which ones.
But how can you do that without some, without getting to the point of some cost estimates?
Well, the cost estimates would be culvert size, you know, estimated work time. The H and H study doesn't cost anything.
Right, that's what I mean.
Chances are that there wouldn't be any depend, there might be some design work that would need to be done. So I guess we would have to determine whether or not the road crew could do the work. And then if there were projects that were kind of beyond the road crew. Then obviously those are the ones that would need some kind of engineer.
What were they?
We haven't, we haven't.
You haven't even got a list yet?
No, we have a, we have a rough list in our heads. We don't have a list present tonight. We need to do some more research.
Some of, some of these culverts are, are perennial stream or not perennial stream. So if it's a perennial stream, that's what triggers.
H and H. And the size is what triggers the need for a design work?
Sometimes the, generally if it's more than three feet diameter, it needs to be designed.
And sometimes the H and H study, they'll suggest a size.
I think Skip was pretty motivated to make this happen, so I think.
Yeah, we, we're scheduled to meet on Wednesday at eleven thirty at the town office. And we'll be able to use, you know, a laptop, this laptop probably and a monitor to access the map. A Vermont culvert map and we'll go from there.
And in terms of the town offices, I think that Skip, I probably have it here. Provided a list of the things that would qualify for. Flood mitigation, new windows, or water mitigation, new windows, new roof, chimney work. Landscape.
Drain in the back.
A drain in the back, some drain trial on the foundation. And Lily, you can jump in if you remember.
Skip was gonna scope out costs for that, so that's kind of.
Well, I think I volunteered, me and Liz to help with that. Which I thought if, if it was okay, we could, that would be something that we could work on in two weeks.
Okay, yeah, that's what's good.
To do some of that work. Just to give, we, I think what I intended with that is to give them some ballpark ideas of cost and then kick it back to you guys.
Well, I think, you know, if you guys come up with basic ballpark. Figures that'll let us know what the total amount might be and then we would, you know, fit that into the money that we have to spend.
So are there stories that the basement in the town office has flooded a lot?
Are there stories? Meaning like is that, is there?
I mean, people's, are people saying that and relying on that? Because I've heard other people's. Uh, who aren't familiar with that building saying that, oh, it floods all the time, but it doesn't. You know, the only other time that it flooded, well, some water came in through the door of the bulkhead down into the back room. Not even, you know, I mean, I was there for ten years and I never saw anything more than a wet floor. Because we had to train the road crew at that time not to pile up snow out in back of the building. Or to take it away before it started to melt because that's what was causing it.
The bulkhead is also another thing that could be replaced.
What's wrong with that bulkhead?
Well, assuming there's leaking water, so that, maybe there's nothing wrong with it.
What do you call that stuff? Weather stripping on the bottom?
Anyways.
I was just, I was just interested to hear that there was so much wrong with the building that.
It's a chance to improve the building.
Even though, okay, well, I'm always gonna vote for some flood mitigation before that. Because we already budgeted for windows and. Yeah, if there's no, if there's money left after the flood mitigation, that'd be great. Town hall too.
Right, that money that is budgeted could be used for other improvements there.
Of course, yeah.
Or it's not used.
I'm still in favor of caulking and weather stripping myself, but I'm old fashioned.
So is there anything, Lily, Alfie, Michael, that we need to bring up regarding that scoping report?
I think we'll have, we'll have, next meeting, we'll have Marshall report as far as a list of culverts.
You got my email that I had just mentioned, uh, ask Nate whether he was generally available or not available this summer. And he was, he did, he is.
Michael, do you have anything? I know these, the grants work is kinda dried up, but do you have any? Thing you wanna?
About the Vtrans grant?
Yeah, I'm kinda skipping over Skip, cause we have the report here.
So the Vtrans grant has been submitted, that's for the construction of the culvert here in the village. And probably be sometime in May that we'll hear about that. The one concern I have with that grant is that I had to use the old sam.gov number. That doesn't seem to work anymore. I just wrote it on there hoping that maybe they would even look. But as far as I know, that whole issue has not been resolved yet. So, yeah, that's pretty much all. And still waiting on some of the other, like the Better Roads grant for Water Road. I can, we'll hear about that at some point here, but. And I did contact Nate about this project on, on Valley Lake Road. And he is willing to be the project manager for it. He actually, I'm looking at the budget that he had put together, he has written in some money for that already. And he suggests that, you know, by the time we get the yay or nay about whether we receive the grant money. It's gonna be probably in the middle of the end of May. So he suggests the best way to, to get. The best time to put out an RFP for that project would be late in the fall. Remember December, contractors have pretty much done their work and they're looking for work for the next year. So this project, and he would put together a RFP. So, and I'm kinda gonna go with what he's suggesting, I think, that makes sense. So the project probably really won't happen until next summer, which is kinda what we had budgeted for anyway. The, one of the concerns is that his estimate from a couple of years ago was for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Vtrans on these structures grants, their upper limit is two hundred thousand dollars. So the town's gonna be needing to come up with the, the rest of that money. Probably will be at this point more than seven five thousand dollars. We may wanna look at this FEMA money that we have and designate some of that for that.
But then, I mean, is the Vtrans money totally separate from federal? So it wouldn't be an issue of matching federal money with federal money?
I believe it wouldn't be an issue, no.
That'd be good.
And I did ask Vtrans, just, you know, we've been thinking about the other two culverts, the Bailey Bridge Road and the Church Street. You know, I asked them if they anticipate that they'll have pretty much the same funding that they have had. So that we could use the Vtrans structures grants for those two projects rather than the FEMA money. And it's something that we can discuss when we make those choices. But they told me that as far as they know, that they should have the same, pretty much the same amount of monies each year available.
So two hundred thousand dollars is what they have? Or is that just for one project?
Probably be the upper limit for those projects.
Structures max out to one seventy-five or, or two seventy-five.
Well, at two hundred is what they, we met with them, they max out at that. So, and whether the other two projects have to be as expensive as this one. That would be something that we could discuss with Nate at some point, assuming that you would be the engineer for those. So it would be a slower process to replace them. So that, that's just, I've been communicating with them about those that we should have done. We do have another option for those two culverts, cause I know those have been ones that we've been talking about.
Problematic. I would say you wouldn't think those would be first on your list of.
Well, they, they had no problems with the flooding that we've had in the last two summers. Those two culverts, all of the culverts through town here were fine. They're just getting old, they need to be replaced, so, and they do qualify as a mitigation project. So we could use that money for that, but.
Thank you. We can, just real quick, under discussion, I thought it would be smart to put future agenda items. And I've been taking notes, but if there's any, for future agenda items. But if there's any thing anybody wants, we can, we can add it. The next meeting that we have will be, we're gonna experiment with this work meeting, which. I, I don't really think that we need to have road commissioners report, so unless you, I think. Unless something comes up and you wanna be on that agenda, go ahead. And even if something comes up that day, you can come in and we can amend the agenda to talk about it, so. That would be true, and Michael, the same thing for you.
And Lily. Next week is at the town office or the town hall?
Two weeks from now, it'll be at the town office.
Town office.
Yeah, and so then my other question was is that it would seem like a lot of the work that needs to be done is computer work a little bit or sending emails. Michael had said that he would leave the town's.
You know, leave this whole thing.
Laptop there.
He's not gonna be there to take the minutes?
I don't wanna sit, well, if you guys are doing business work.
I don't know what we're gonna do, but.
I don't really wanna sit there.
I can do the, I can do the minutes if we need someone to do them.
And the minutes, I think, are gonna be really simple, that they're gonna, you know.
I'll have to do the minutes if, Michael, I mean, if you don't know how to use Word.
I mean, I can type, I have, I struggle with certain functions of it. I can like, I can do the minutes. But if you wanna do them, you're probably better at it than me.
So I've got a list, list of things that I think we could work on. One is that I think the RFP for the town off roof, town hall roof. Is, we need to take that, you know, like, we need to come up with a new one and put, and put it together, which takes a ton of time. So I'm happy to work on that again.
But we have one, right? The one from what?
It's terrible. And I think that there's one reason why we didn't get any bits, so it needs to be redone. We need to, somebody needs to make a front porch forum post about all the appointments that we need. We need to create a scope of work for the town offices. So that for the purposes of. The use of the excess FEMA funds. As we were talking, there's possibly, possibly that we need to draft a policy or search for a policy for emails for future. Select board members. And I did have here, but it sounds like you're gonna take care of it, is emailing or getting in touch with the lawyer. A lawyer for the title search. And then, yeah, so those are the things that we can be working on there that I know I will not have time. To do before then. But any other agenda items, I guess, just send them to one of the three of us.
You wanna do that?
Email training, I did, I maybe missed, like, when, is that just kinda balls in Skip's court on that?
Yeah, and then they'll get, I think we'll get set up with an email and then it. I think that one of these meetings is perfect time to have that training.
But not necessarily this.
In two weeks, maybe it will, in which case we could, we could table all the rest of this work and.
We can use it, we can start using a new email without getting the training.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. And Lily will be there, should be able to figure it all out. So unless there's anything else, we can update, we, we have an executive session for personnel matters. And we can update other businesses and. Can drop the, these off tomorrow, so you don't have to wait around, or we do this real quick, although this isn't real quick. Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll figure out how to get it there.
Okay, well, I have to drop it off at the office work for you. I mean, I get, I don't really know your guys' schedule, but if someone's passing by the office, that's fine. If you wanna drop it off in the morning since.
It'll be before I think you guys get there, so.
You have a key?
Do you have a key? No?
I do have a key, I think. I have a key that looks like it belongs to me, I don't know.
It's really big.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
That's it. Yeah.
Your personal key number?
I got a busy day tomorrow morning. But we'll get him there. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lily.
So I guess we need a motion to.
I move that we enter an executive session to discuss personnel employee matters.
And then maybe while we're waiting for everybody to, oh yeah, we gotta vote on it. All those in favor?